Order, would you please stand and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome to the meeting. The first thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes, and I just saw one thing that I thought might be wrong. Date. Okay. On the second page at the top. Said Mr. Ackley.
Yes, that's right. Yeah. Yes, I did see that too.
It's the one date.
Yep, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah. He expects to have them ready for the August 6th meeting, which was the meeting we were in, so.
Oh, okay.
The financial statements, but I don't know what the date was. Remember what the date?
Maybe this one.
Supposed to be this one?
Maybe, I guess.
Oh, the find out the year in financials. Remember anymore?
The. Said it out to us before. Right? We saw that. Yeah. Okay.
Make a motion, we accept the minutes as amended. From the August 6th.
I'll second that.
With the motion by Kent and a second by Chris to approve the minutes with the amendment, all those in favor. Thank you. Next are department reports and.
We need one department.
Did anybody see Jessica's?
That was just on my email before I came.
Yeah, I didn't see it either, okay, I just wanted to make sure I didn't see it, so I'm just, that's why I was, I'm sorry, that's why I'm looking at my phone to make sure. Oh, thanks. Let's see here. Okay, so just a, just a couple of things, I'm gonna, this'll, this'll be probably the bulk of your meeting, but just before that, I just want to say that Lori and I attended the the main managers' meeting last week. I, I'm proud to announce that I've been also, in addition to the ICMA credential manager, I was, I was at the meeting issued the the credential main manager association. Our designation, which is from the Maine Town and City Managers Association. On another note, I don't know if any of you know it, but I just want to say it out loud because I'm proud, is that the the, our managers group raised fifteen thousand dollars for Assistant City Manager Bill Post, who was recently diagnosed without ALS. So we tried to raise fifteen thousand to put a handicap wheelchair ramp on the front of his house, and we were able to do that at the conference over a few weeks before that, so I just want to say that out loud because I'm very proud of our, of our profession for helping him out. He's only like in his fifty, so it's kind of a sad thing. The other thing that I, I wanted, as I said in my thing to you folks that I wanted to talk about was the revale. You know, there's been a lot of questions about that, Donna and I had a meeting on Tuesday with the with Fender, which is KRT. Their, their work is done. But the, but the letters won't go out until sometime late next week, so people should start receiving them a week after that sometime, so if they go in the mail like next Thursday, so just imagine how, how good mail works. They'll start getting their proposed values after that. The problem is, is that they don't have enough time to hold the meetings with the individuals that want to that want to have the in-person or the phone calls or the Zooms or whatever it is that they're, they're, for people that want to talk about those proposed values. So our problem is, is that if we run into that, they think that the latest that delivery date would be, would be like September nineteenth. Well, our due date on our warrant was October fifteenth. So. If you, if you, if the, if the latest that they can get all of their meetings done is September nineteenth, and they, they hand that over on September nineteenth. Donna is not available that following week, she's committing taxes in other communities, so we're there, there just simply is not enough time in the calendar to have those, have the tax bills printed and give people any amount of you know, any amount of leeway, which I would say would should be a month for them to be able to come in and pay their taxes. So with that being said, I think that we need to, at your next meeting, I'm going to propose that, that you consider holding a special town meeting to move that due date to November first.
From October fifteenth.
We do have enough cash on hand, it's not a cash flow problem.
Okay.
It's just a, it's just a, it's just a tax, it's just a function of if I, if I would have thought about it better, I would have, I would have used the old, the language that some communities use, which is October fifteenth or thirty days after commitment, I didn't think of it, it's my lapse of judgment, you know, it's just, I didn't think of putting that, it's not the way you guys have ever done it, but some towns have that language in their in their warrant, and that would have made it, you know, so that we wouldn't have to have a special town meeting for this. But I think it should just be, it's a, it's a kind of a nonsense question, but we have to do it, so I would suggest that you just hold, like we did with the truck, we just hold an in-person town meeting at Compton Hall and you know, whoever shows up, and then we can try to get that fixed. If not, we're, we're just gonna, if you don't want to do that, that's fine, we're just only gonna end up giving people like, you know, ten days notice, you know, they're gonna get the bill in the mail, and they're only gonna have five or ten days to come in here and pay, and I don't think that's really fair.
I think that we're gonna compound whatever angst people already got.
Exactly, exactly, that's the way, that's the way I think about it too. As of August twenty-second, they are going to be charged, they, they know what I told them, I'm, I'm invoking the hundred dollar a day penalty, so every day after August twenty-second, they're paying us a hundred dollars a day for being late. They know that, I made that very clear to them two weeks ago. I think that's what precipitated them being getting to that September nineteenth deadline, because the last time I talked to them, it was like, well, in October. But I think they don't, they don't want to pay that for all that time, so. We will save a little money on that end, they know it. But I'll bring that to you as a, as an official item on your agenda, but I wanted you to know that this is, that it is a pro, that they are done, so I will say that, it's not, it's not so far behind. Their concern now is that with Labor Day and everything, that they're not going to be able to have their taxpayer meetings done timely, or to give people enough opportunity to come in and go through that process, and I would say that it's important in my experience to go through that process, because if they, if the taxpayers don't have the opportunity to do that, it generates more appeals that will then be dropped on you folks that have to try to deal with, with Donna, so it's better to give them that opportunity to come in and talk to them about whatever their particular circumstances, but that's the update on the revale at this point.
Is it possible we could just schedule an open town meeting for what would otherwise be a select board meeting? And wrap the two in the, in the same thing, do it at Compton Hall? I don't know.
Yeah, whatever you folks want to do.
Find a moderator. To do.
People are looking at you.
Should be the easiest moderation job in the world, because I don't think that anybody's really gonna care, right? Right, yeah, oh, yeah, it'll be, elect a moderator, and you want to change the due date and taxes, which is pushing them back, which most people probably wouldn't mind that either.
Are you sure that that is enough time to go November first, or should we look for November fifteenth, go thirty days, just to be sure?
I asked, I asked, and Donna was, if you know Donna, she was emphatic, she said, if you're not gonna be able to do it, you need to tell me now. And they said that those letters are gonna go out the end of next week, by Thursday of next week, is what they said, they said they would be ready, and they'll go out. And, but they needed that time to schedule the taxpayer meeting, so their work is done. Like, their work is done in the system, they they needed today, so Donna was in the office today, and they said we need today, tomorrow, and the next day to work in the system, and I told Donna, just get out of the system and go home if you want, you know, do whatever. They said they had three more days worth of data entry to do in the system, and then they were done, and that they, that they would be all set by September.
Should we use that language though, November first or thirty days?
I would, if we did, if we did in another town meeting, that's, that's the language I would, I would suggest, yes, that is, that is correct, that's what I would put on there.
On this occasion?
I would probably put it just in the future anyway, just because, you know, say something, I mean, God forbid, something happens to Donna some, at some point, and she's not available to commit the taxes or whatever, it's, it's better to have, we probably should just incorporate that into our normal language that just says October fifteenth or thirty days after commitment, that way if something happens and, you know, say our computer system all blew up or something. Right, you know, it just just to give us that cover so we don't have to do this anymore, you know, we wouldn't have to do this again.
Although we've never had to do it, in my memory.
Absolutely, I totally understand that too, I mean, it's, it's unusual. They're behind, they're, they admit it, they know, they're gonna pay for it. But I just wanted to say that out loud, so the next meeting I'll bring forward sort of an, an option for you to hold it, you know, for you to call a special town meeting, and then we'll we'll do it, special town meetings only require a seven-day notice, so it's not, it's not really an issue, it's just a matter of having Paul post it. Excuse me?
Could do it at the next select board meeting.
Right. Yeah. It's just not on the agenda today, because I just had the meeting yesterday morning. But but just so you know, that's, that's what we're that's what we're looking at at this point.
Donna explained it to me very well yesterday.
Yeah. Did she say anything differently than I did? Okay, good.
She is the oracle, I said.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, that's.
I think that's all I have, unless there's any questions.
I have a question about the TIF funding and the appreciation of the Main Street TIF properties.
Yes, and I've looked into that for you, so the, the under, under our TIF and under most of them, I just wanted to make sure, because I know some of them are different, is that the, the revale number will be the new number for the calculation of the TIF, so the appreciation, so right now we have to, we have to adjust the value of the CMP assets by the certified ratio of town. So that, that means that the town is at, let's just, let's just say the town's at ninety percent, we have to reduce the CMP assessed value by ten percent to get it to the ninety, to apply it the same as everyone else. When we go, when the revale is done, or we're at a hundred, we can assess CMP at that one hundred percent value.
And, and what about the the other parcels that are within the TIF district?
All of it is going to be considered the same, so like most of the anything that's in it is going to be treated the same way.
So there are dozens and dozens of, of parcels along Main Street, as I understand it, that along with the CMP were put into that TIF district?
That's correct.
And so hypothetically, I have a hundred thousand dollar house that is now valued hypothetically at a hundred and twenty.
Yep.
That falls, that is, that is on a parcel of land that is within the TIF district, the, the Main Street TIF district.
Yep.
So the increase from a hundred to a hundred and twenty, twenty thousand dollars would become sheltered within the TIF.
We only capture the value that is in the, that is in, that it's at the CMP substation.
So we don't capture increased.
District is, is, is all of Main Street, which means that we can spend the money within that TIF district.
But not the value, not the property value?
Correct.
That's only the CMP.
We basically use the CMP value to fund the TIF program, is what, is what it is, not the, not the rest of, the, the rest of the, the rest of the TIF district.
Which directs the spending.
Is where we can direct the spending, yep. Yep. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. And.
So we'll help the TIF, there'll be more, there'll be more money in the TIF when the, when the revale is done. Because of the CMP thing, we'll be able to be valued a hundred percent. Yep.
Handcuffed sign at the East Monmouth Boat Launch.
Let me ask, let me, let me check with Tony on that, it's not, it's not up yet?
No.
Okay.
At least not as of yesterday.
Okay.
If there's motion on it, that's, that's great. Any, any action on the, on the code enforcement?
Although I got a, I got a lead from Chris, so we're, we're reaching out to an individual who just had his hours reduced in a different community. So we're gonna reach out on that front and see if we can scoop them up, it is a little far away, but we're, we are gonna we are reaching out to see if that's interesting.
It's okay to read them and stuff. And what happens in other towns?
This was, I assume, select board reports?
Department reports, but if you, if you looked in select board reports.
Yes.
Then the eighteen fifty-six Academy is having a fundraiser on October third with Gary Crocker, nineteen sixty-six graduate, doing a show for us, and we have in conjunction with that, so it's October, Friday, October third at seven PM, and tickets are twenty dollars, which are now on the MyRec page, that you can purchase tickets through MyRec, because we've got that figured out, how to be able to do that instead of using a third party beyond the town.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, Dennis, for helping with that, and we're also doing raffles, reached out to a number of area businesses, and some of those businesses are owned by generous alumni that were able to give gift cards or items and wonderful quilt that we're looking for. Seven, seven, on October third, so. And so the raffle tickets are essentially available now, I haven't posted a list yet, because I was waiting for a description. And those are going to be available, and I'll be able to have them at Apple Fest, which is the weekend before the show, and then we'll draw after the show, the day after the show, for the raffle items, but I'll be posting a list of the raffle items as well, so. We're looking forward to that.
It was a good mix, I'd say.
Yes, yeah.
And I contacted Wendy Dennis about somebody to do the dam. And he, she contacted you, right? And you gave her a couple of names?
Yes.
And.
Are they reputable people?
No, we're not.
Are you sure Dave knows them?
I, I believe everybody is on board, I, I just talked to Dustin tonight about a issue that has arisen through Wendy to us. And I passed it along to the powers that be, so if you want me to explain it, I will.
Yeah, yeah, sure, why, why don't you?
She, she thinks that this time that we're gonna change from Tony to a dam keeper, or keepers, would be a good time to figure out and settle once and for all the right-of-way to the dam. Since the now not going to be just Tony and his crew going, there's going to be three people that aren't affiliated with the town, so to speak, trudging through properties that we don't want to be trespassing on to get to the dam, so it's been in question for twenty five years or so, since Rick Scali's father stopped doing it. Because he did it off his own property, never went to the right-of-way. The right-of-way, as we think we know it, runs through somebody's driveway. You're not sure, you'd like to get it squared away.
So Caitlin, for you, I'm not sure how many of you are aware of this situation, but especially for you, because you're new, is if you go down to the boat launch, if, if you go down to the beach, the, the house directly before that is owned by the Woods, and our assertion is that we have a right-of-way to go down his driveway and cut, kind of behind, but he's built a pool, like, they, they really developed that property down there, and our assertion is that a right-of-way is through his property, he does not want us on his property, and just due to sheer convenience, the owner of the, on the other side, which is off of Thompson.
Thompson.
Drive, go Blue Road and then do go down there.
Oh, sure.
He doesn't have any problem with us cutting through his property, so we've been out of convenience, we've been, in, in the past, we've been cutting through his property. Tony doesn't have the same aversion to conflict that some other people have, so Tony drives in his driveway and in fact, there walks right, right across it, but but we don't clearly know where that is, so just to explain it, that's what, that's what Dave is mentioning.
What would, what would be involved with asserting our?
We would probably need a title attorney. For someone to help us read whatever it is, you know, that, there are some documents that are kind of unclear, it says like, go to the stream, and so if you go to the stream and you go through, there's a bunch of trees there, there's no easy access, and it's really, it's, it's really not feasible to go from beach road through the woods, you know, every time you want to just go look at the dam, right, so it's like, we need a serious route through, and it may be even that, that our access is not sufficient, we may even need to like, purchase something from somebody or, or whatever it is.
Yeah.
You know, so that we have a clear.
The only other access would be from the back of the firehouse.
Right, right.
Making a path through, but we, there is a property owner that we have to work with.
Right.
To get a, a right-of-way through it, but because it's lowland and swampy and never been trudged, even by me, because of it wet, you know, it's gonna be an excavator and fill and to make some sort of a goat path through it, so we can park at the firehouse parking lot, walk to the dam, it's not that far.
Right, which would be the most ideal.
Which would be most ideal, but I'm not gonna try to shoot the swamp and.
Right. And whether that's even feasible, whether, whether we can even allow it to happen, I, I, I don't know, but it's, it's not, it's not clear.
Scali has owned that property for
forever.
Yeah, right, yes.
And the problem, the problem with accessing off of Thompson Drive is that portion of the road is owned by a private road association, when we were fixing the dam, they wanted compensation for us driving over it. Even though the guy that lives there is very amenable to us crossing his property, the owner of the, the owner of the, the road association is not, so even getting that way, like, we could use his his yard, he's, he's perfectly fine with us cutting through there, because he's only there on the weekends, whatever, he doesn't mind, but.
Is it DRC?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Hugh?
My family sold property when it was a cottage and access to the lake. There's a person alive who was all the way, was a realtor, Lee Plummer, who I think really understands the right-of-way for the land that's behind the fire station going down through there.
Okay.
But while he's still on this earth, like, with this conversation coming up, might, who busted? People now, I saw him at the, I called the dump the other day.
What's his name, Hugh?
Blaine. Blaine.
Very well-known. Realtor.
Robinson Drive.
Like plumber, like the profession?
No, MME.
MME.
He wants to have all this, you know, that land detail.
Okay.
I think he has a landline still, because I talked to him not long ago.
At the PD, I know we don't.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. So.
Would be a good start there, at least you'll.
His, his. Daughter. Well, no, his daughter's well, anyway.
Is she living?
Well, yeah, she lives, no, he, they have their own house up there, his granddaughter has her own house up there, but I was getting, I was mixing and matching relatives, so sorry about that, but anyway, Darian Netto is related by marriage.
Tyler Netto.
So Tyler Netto, but Darian Netto, yes, is the other brother, so that's why I was getting confused, because there is relation there, they'll know who, who you are, who's calling.
Tyler, right, that's why, the wife is the grandparent of our daughter.
Yes. But then it's on the other side, I was mixing and matching relatives.
The Netto brothers.
Yes, exactly, exactly, the Netto twins.
Oh, they're twins?
Oh, they're not, their fathers were the fathers, so anyways, yes.
And our cousin.
Well, state trooper Tyler, Tyler is a Saint boy, and so he's a state trooper, and then Darian is a DeBlois.
Can you diagram this for us?
Exactly, I will.
How old is he?
He's a Winford.
He's been when my father was working there?
No, because Tyler is my cousin's son, so.
Oh, okay, so now.
I gotta, I gotta leave by seven fifteen.
Dickens gotta get out of here.
Yes, exactly, so that's a map of their origins, but anyway.
Anyway, Wendy's offers to teach us or to go through it with us at any time, now I can get us three and Wendy and work together.
Yeah. It can be done, I mean, the Woodbury Pond Dam, which we, which we helped pay to fund to replace, has been managed by a, by a dam keeper forever. So, and it works well because the person has a vested interest in.
Correct, and all three for this are interested, because they're living on the land.
Yeah.
Wendy's trying to just log later.
Oh, yeah. She writes like she talks.
She wants it to be.
I like Wendy, I'm not.
She talks into her computer and the computer types.
Anything else, select board reports?
I have two sentences, there was a meeting of the Trails Committee, and we're close to being ready to finalize our application for the the grant, the two hundred thousand dollar grant for Trail Over the Hill here. And the Rick, Mike Griswold came, presented, listened, it was good, it was good meeting. And then there was also a conversation, I promised, because we are working on an application to we're done with talking to DOT about access to Main Street, and then DOT says, oh, and by the way, you need to talk to ACF. Here's your application, so they get, we get the application, the application's a little big, we're working through an application through ACF, one of the things that would be very helpful would be if we could as a select board, allow the parking of all-terrain vehicles, four-wheelers, yada, yada, UTVs at the town parking lot outside of Town Hall.
Does ATF have to do with?
ACF.
ATF.
Uh, they've got some.
What does ACF stand for?
Agriculture Conservation and Forestry.
Okay.
And they're, they've got some oversight in terms of trails.
Really, the Trails, the Trails program is under them?
Under, under ACF.
Uh, so it's weird.
Yeah, and they give out grants, I mean.
Right.
They, they are the, the, the bookkeeper of the grant funding for.
And we are a member of that organization, but we don't have trails, so the question is, what trails that you have that are already approved through us, are you using for these trailheads? And of course, we can't answer that, if we don't have trails.
Right, it's chicken and egg.
We're going chicken and egg, back and forth, back and forth, trying to figure out how to make this application work.
So I would like to make an official motion that would appear in our minutes, in case we need documentation, that the select board support the parking of ATVs, UTVs, four-wheel vehicles at the town parking lot outside of Town Hall.
And our clubhouse.
And at, at the clubhouse.
Because we only rent. There you go.
And, uh, so somebody would drive their vehicle, their ATV or a, you, or UTV down to the town office.
They'd have to bring a car with a trailer and unload it as a trailhead. So, you know, that might get dicey during the week when you've got BIW vehicles there. But nothing, no, but I mean, at the town office, because if it is, you won't.
Because there's no place to go. Nobody's going to come here with a trailer and an ATV just to ride up and down Main Street.
Well, of course you might.
No, no. All right. Well, then I can amend my motion to say this is on a trial basis, if we want to try it and then-
I don't have any concerns. We, we have, uh, the BIW people park in the back. They're very easy to deal with. Our parking lot is way too large for the size of the town office we have. So if people want to park trailers up and down one whole row, it doesn't make any difference.
Or the-
There's never that many people there, except maybe on tax day, but they can, you know, park on the street. Like, you know, we just have to, this, this, it's not that dense of a downtown, they can park on the street. You know, whatever.
All right. So anyone want a second, my motion?
Good question.
There we go. We have a second.
Do you have a question?
I don't understand.
The application requires a parking area for trail system. You have to be able to have a parking area designated for a trail system, no matter where it is. Every community that lets ATVs ride on their road and has trails, has a trailhead or a parking area associated with that trail, so people can go and park.
Anywhere in Maine.
Everywhere in Maine.
Well.
Well, like if you go to New Hampshire.
That have a tri- a trail system.
Trail system.
Probably if you go to New Hampshire in your White Mountains, every, every so many feet, there's a, there's a parking area that people can drop their trailers and send their four-wheelers out.
In Eastern Maine, there's like, you can park at that grocery store. I can't remember.
And so as we're making up this application to agriculture, conservation, forestry, we need to demonstrate that we have a plan for parking, so that, that application can move forward. And then that will satisfy DOT. And then that will mean we have a backbone to our network on Main Street.
So then we can start working on trail. All they're trying to avoid is that you create a trailhead and no place for them to park it and they're lining up and down the street. And DOT doesn't want to deal with that either, right? They don't, they don't want to deal with you piling up trailers on the shoulder that then, you know, creates traffic problems. They just want to know that you have a plan for where these people are going to sit. Here, I don't, I don't envision that ever being an issue, so. But they want to make sure they check the box.
If you have trouble with it, you can use a skate car. We can use a skate car.
Right. Right. Or park on the lawn. I mean, I'm not-
Cause they're going to unload onto the lawn anywhere.
You?
But we, in the system, this road is one of the roads.
It is.
So to get to the parking lot, you could use a shortcut, right? Cause you own the land.
You-
Right across the grass.
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly.
You could. In fact, right now, we've already given permission to run up and down this road as many times as you want with an ATV.
Right.
Make it case you can park it that would really fit this great scheme. If you unload it there, run across the grass lawn, hit a county road, that's like a little shortcut. And you'd be one of the first people to allow someone off, hey?
There you go.
I like that. It's true. I mean, what, I mean-
We think outside the box.
Well, you know, it's a big, big piece of lawn that Tony has to mow. They've ruined it, right? Mowing.
So the motion, I can't, second by Mark, uh, Mike? Yes, Mark, Mike. My Mike. All those in favor?
For a minute.
Any more select board reports? Okay. Any, uh, public comment?
No hands on, online, so.
I have one public comment. So golf carts in town. When I was coming up here tonight, there was a golf cart pulling up on Pleasant Street and going into, on the parking.
Good thing they didn't get picked up by the-
They're not legal. Golf carts cannot be ridden on public ways.
Well, that's who it is, though.
What type of golf cart is it? Cause I did read the state law and certain ones are allowed.
If they have blinkers and brake lights and-
Does it have?
Windshield wiper.
Yeah. Windshield wipers, yeah.
No windshield wipers.
They treat golf carts at a higher standard than they do four-wheelers.
Yes.
For whatever reason, I don't understand it, but they do.
And I just wanted, I wanted to like clarify. I thought, I don't know who it was. It was a guy I didn't know. I don't know, but I, I thought.
But when this came up last time, I was curious. I read the law and there is a certain type of golf cart that is allowed. It's the one that is bigger with the seatbelts and everything.
And it has different wheels and things like that, because it's more of a rail vehicle than it is a golf cart. My second question is, I noticed that Dennis posted something. Somebody drove down and parked on the rocks.
The new trail.
The new trail. I was going to mention, yeah, they drove right down the trail.
Yeah.
Behind Thompson.
Do we have a- Tony had, Tony put rocks, some barrier rocks there today. Dennis, because I saw Dennis today and he told me that.
I saw it on Facebook and I was like, oh, so I was going to say, do we, do we need to put rocks or?
Yeah. Tony moved some, Tony moved some barrier rocks in there. And I think that, uh, probably it's important also just, just for, uh, also advertising about our trail system is that we should have our town logo and stuff that says, this is a walk, this is a multi-use trail for, you know, whatever. And just say Town of Monmouth, you know, multi-use trip.
I'm wondering if we're going to put a sign.
Yes, that's what, that is my, that is, that is my intention, is that we will start trying to label these things as they keep getting developed with sort of a common signage theme that, you know, basically will say, you know.
Maroon and white, kind of.
Right. And depending what it is, you know, no ATVs, no, you know, no snowmobiles, whatever. Definitely no, this, Maine has an aversion to golf carts. I don't know what their issue is.
Well, every state really does.
Well, no, I mean, you, you live in the south. You can drive them all over the place.
Well, in that development, but you're still supposed to be sixteen and have a license.
That's true. You are, you are supposed to be licensed.
You're supposed to, um, have an orange-
Triangle.
Triangle on the back. You're supposed to obey rules.
Yeah.
So every day there was some kid that was ten, driving around and cutting people off.
Sure they are, right?
So every state has an aversion to them in a way. They just, no. And that's elephant, they-
You?
Just, uh, bicycles, for example, there'll be a lot of that trail behind.
Yes, it's a, it's a multi-use trail. You just can't drive a vehicle down. The idea is not for cars.
It's true. I mean, it's, it's given to be kind of, to be blurred as all these electric bikes, which go almost as fast as your motorized-
It's true.
Vehicle.
Yeah.
There's something there that doesn't jive.
Well, in Texas, there was a sign, no motorized vehicles on the sidewalks, so.
So if they, if they have a motor, then they can't go.
They couldn't go on the sidewalks.
Due to what's, you, you, your concern is state parks don't allow electric bikes. They say it right in your rental agreement, when you, when you rent, because, and it's, and, uh, I don't really know where that came from, other than they go fast. But, um, but you cannot have an electric bike at like, for example, I was just at Sebago and I've been talking about getting one for myself. And it was, it was one of those things. And I looked it up and I was like, well, if you had one, you couldn't drive it here. And, you know, because she's smarter than me, so she reads, she reads the paper. And, and so it was, but that is an interesting thing. And I looked it up. So the state parks don't allow you to ride electric bikes on state park property. And I don't, you know, they came up with that. I don't know. So there are ways to-
I don't know, we would, from, you know, from all the future trails, but I think some of them would be prohibited. We would follow that state park dynamic, I would hope.
Yeah.
Some of them are probably appropriate for them, but in the future, I'd say the law.
It, it might be on Wither Woods. I don't know. We have to look at that sign. There's all the rule.
Right. No, there is, there, there is. I'm, I'm not sure if it even mentions that.
No, I haven't looked at it in such a long time, but-
Yeah, I know. I haven't been out.
Bikes weren't such a thing when that was first-
But whatever we put here, we're going to probably put it where your woods, because you want to make a rule of saying.
Right, right, right. Exactly. I'd like to have all the signage be kind of consistent through the town properties, just so that people can get it.
Get a copy, take a picture of it.
Take credit for it, you know, like as, I mean, I mean, from my, from my perspective, you know, representing you, it's like, I, I want, I want our, I want it to say Town of Monmouth every time we build one of these things, that people know that this is something that the community has paid for. Please respect it and, and, and we've invested in this, so that's the, that's the goal.
Okay.
But Woodbury, for example, the, the sanctuary down there.
There are rules and regs on that one, too.
There, there are some there, but I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I don't know what they, I can't remember exactly what they said, but-
Actually, it says walking only, right on.
I think, yeah, it does. You can, you cannot ride bikes up there. I know that.
And we're motorized, that and the parking lot.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, uh, okay.
I, I forgot. I wanted to ask Justin something, to ask Tony whether the blinking twenty-five mile an hour sign by, by the town office, which doesn't, yes, doesn't aim in the right direction anyway. And if it does need to be replaced, I would like a larger sign, what I wanted in the first place. Bigger twenty-five mile an hour signs.
Way too tiny.
It is way too tiny.
And way too-
I was unimpressed when we got those by trees. Well, I mean, like the one going into Wayne that says village area and then it's got twenty-five and it's telling you to slow down. I mean, that's what I envisioned when I asked for those signs.
Well, I can, I can tell you, if I ask Tony for that, it's going to be up, so it won't be a problem.
Thank you.
It will be, it will be replaced.
If he wants to replace that with a bigger and better flashing neon Sunday.
I have the note. I have the note. I got it.
On both ends.
Yeah, if we replace one, we'll play-
Where is the other one?
By Steve and his greenhouse.
Okay, down on the other end?
Yeah, that's where the other-
I see this one every day.
Yes.
And I heard that our chair would be happy to, uh, speed through those to test them to make sure that it'll work.
On his bicycle?
On his, on his-
On his electric bike?
On his lawnmower. He wants to ride his lawnmower downtown.
You have a volunteer, can I?
Way to ask.
There's plenty of volunteers for speeding through some of the, no.
I saw, just, just to, I, I don't need to exonerate it for doing something. I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying to get you right to the end, trying to get you right to the end. Is, is that, it was, I, I was out there, I walked out, sometimes I'm, I'm on my cell phone, it's easier to hear. So I walk out to that, that back area, like where the picnic table is. You, you can hear people sometimes, like right at the town office, they like speed up. You can hear them like step on it. It's like, you know, just went by the sign right there.
Yeah. Down at the flats. I mean, and my house faces, you know, down the street. So the minute anybody, there's a couple of trucks every single night.
I do it on.
Yeah. GTO, I hope it's forgive you with that.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah. If you do it with that car, that's cool.
As we say, being at Woodbury, trucks.
Anyway, I'm speeding back on track. That's going to get out of here.
They're onto warrant number forty-six, uh, physical year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Which we don't have, so you can skip that one.
Table that one.
Table it for the next meeting.
An adjournment.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?